This meeting of Penrith Town Council, we advise the masks are preferred before required. And the decision to wear a mask less is entirely within individuals. If you're speaking, please take it off so people can hear clearly. There's no foul unexpected, so we're going to allow them going off. Please exit calmly by the brown and rear door and assemble in front of the flag in house at Tappock End. The toilets are accessed by the rear door and beyond the stair on the right. Please ensure that mobile phones are either turned off or switched to silent. And please be advised this meeting is recorded, and will be. If anyone has a problem with this, please let me know for the meeting to be adjusted further. Apologies.
Mr Chair, we have apologies from Councillor Green, Clark and Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Right, item two, confirmation of full council meetings. I would like to ask members to authorize the chair to sign at the correct record the minutes of the meeting for full council held on Monday the nineteenth of December twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second there?
Yeah. I called the Chair of Calum's minutes. In the minutes, it missed that I slammed the toilet roll down on the desk. I placed the toilet roll, did not slam. And also, I have challenged validity of items that I made in the meeting minutes and the progress of that meeting, because ten members of this council left the live public meeting. As Chair, you did not suspend the meeting, and the members left the room for thirty-two minutes, leaving three members, which means the meeting fell in order, meaning that any business that transacted after that period technically was conducted in the meeting that wasn't duly called, because members had left the room.
We take these items, well, there's two items there. One, I think that that toilet roll was put in front of me, not placed. I would have called it aggressively placed.
There's a video to prove otherwise.
So I'm, I'm, I'm recipient of it, so I know what I witnessed. And I'm afraid that I didn't place, because you put that place or that place. Um, I'm, I'm concerned, I do not accept that. But what else have you taken?
I'm not going to quibble about the placing of the toilet roll. The more serious matters of the pressing of the business of the council.
You've raised two points, and we need to take, sort them out, both of them. And the first one, I'm afraid I don't accept. And I don't allow you to use that one.
Sure.
Yes.
Um, I think there is a video of this, so that will probably confirm how it was placed or landed.
Yes.
Mr Chair, officers of the council reviewed the video, and we were prepared that the toilet roll was placed, not placed with the sand. That's the opinion of the officers who reviewed the video, being as fine.
I think that really, um, the intention was aggressive. It was, it was intended to show that councillor Davies was angry. Um, whether that's justified or not, that's irrelevant. But it was, the action was intended to show that councillor Davies was angry. Uh, and, and I wish to put this back as well, because councillor Davies posted it on social media. And I would say it, um, it was placed aggressively, and I think slammed isn't appropriate word. And I propose that be accepted, and this will be worked around. I would check on that.
Can I just say something? Because I just read this before I came down, and I felt slammed was an emotive word to use. I honestly can't remember how he put it there. I was just amazed that he chose to, but he did. Um, I'm also concerned about whether, did he say a storm was coming, or was it a certain kind of storm?
A storm.
Just a storm.
We checked that.
You know, I, I think, well, they're not so as open arguing about something like this.
I'm, just, just my two pennies as well. I, I'm, I kind of agree with councillor Shepherd. I was quite surprised to find that there was so much detail in this particular part of the items. Everything else in the minutes is very kind of business matter of fact. This is just more like a, more like a kind of a narrative that we don't normally have.
We don't normally do the basic minutes. The reason we do is that councillor Davies informed the meeting that he was going to take legal action against the council. So we thought we'd have to be all so well.
Okay, that makes sense.
Do we, I don't know what happened. Should we vote on that or not?
You've had it seconded that the wording names have changed.
Okay.
In terms of wording in the council toilet roll, the whole thing of the meeting is still.
Yes, but, 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 the deal is with the slammed down toilet roll or otherwise.
You've had a proposal, you've had a second there, you need to vote.
In favour of what we even had, I said, has worded.
Right.
Right, um. Someone has a.
Mr Chair, um, for the, for the benefit of the council, councillor Davies has been in correspondence with the council solicitor, and he has expressed his opinion over several emails regarding his opinion of how the meeting was conducted on the nineteenth of December. Solicitor's opinion is that the council on the nineteenth of December did not continue when the members retired after councillor Davies' representations were made. Retirement at this juncture was agreed by council after a vote by members. Indeed, you proposed it, councillor Shepherd, seconded it, there was a show of hands, and members left the room. The meeting was suspended during a member's retirement. The retirement was to enable members to consider the representation which had been made and receive legal advice. You might recall that councillor Davies said that he was going to take legal action in the council. The council solicitor considers the retirement to be permissible and appropriate, given the circumstances and the nature of the matter being considered. And it was what members decided. The members, the retirement was to enable them, to enable or facilitate the members' proper and effective consideration of the matter. Solicitor does not agree with councillor Davies.
I have reported it to the monitoring officer in council, just for openness and transparency. Um, because, let's face facts, we've had council meetings in the past we've had to recall, because they weren't called correctly. We've had employments agreed that should have been, and this is when this whole thing, it taught my fag of that issue. So I'm sorry, I have reported it to a monitoring officer, because I believe this council did not conduct the business appropriately. At no time is the meeting on the nineteenth suspended after anything in standing orders or legislation. The Chair simply said we should go to a private meeting. This meeting remains open at that time.
Well, it's not our legal advice, but. So not the, sorry.
Would you say if it's being referred to the monitoring officer, surely we should give it to them? And when we, what we, what we feel that this is important to be here, but then, you know, so we need to vote on what?
The minutes can be approved as, as they stand. What we could do by way of, um, ensuring that councillor Davies' um, representation to the minutes is so that we can record within the body of these meetings minutes, your deception, your concern about how that meeting was convened, or how that, that session was convened, and what happened thereafter. If, if that's acceptable, really.
That's acceptable, yeah. Thank you very much.
You can help me with the wording with that as well if you want to, but, um, is that acceptable to members?
I think so. You need to vote or just?
Yeah.
Yes. And I think that's the best solution to this. There's, there's too many technicalities to get voted out yet.
Okay. Can I just be clear? So, so there was a proposal to accept the minutes, would that amend?
Yeah, and we can agree, no, 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 we're agreeing the minutes.
Right.
What I proposed to councillor Davies, which he appears to accept, is within the meeting, the minutes of this meeting, I would say, in the narrative there, that councillor Davies raised an objection and explained that he'd been, he's contacted the monitoring officer, and that in his, his opinion, the meeting wasn't lawful after members retired.
So just so your procedure is correct, I can take it that councillor, um, Shepherd has proposed that?
Yes.
Yes.
Has it been seconded?
The minutes.
No, the, the proposal about accepting these minutes.
Oh, I see.
And with the new minutes.
No, I don't, no, you're right. We haven't had a second for that proposal. Correct. Thank you. Do you want to, do you want to agree the wording that we've got in the minutes now, or would you prefer that?
I think it's best to, to agree.
I think most would be happy for you and councillor Davies to come to an agreement on what the wording should be.
Does that satisfy councillor Davies? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, uh, uh, vote. In favour?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Right. Declaration of interest for request of dispensation.
You'll receive, Councillor Shepherd?
Right. Public participation. Are there any requests or dispensations of member of the public?
No.
Are there any reports from district or county councillors? Who is to speak?
Please.
Please, yes.
Yeah, so first apologies, I was a little late. And can I, uh, offer apologies from councillor Bell? We were both at a meeting this afternoon at Kendal, and we've, we've struggled to get back, to be honest. Um, my, my update is going to be very brief, because quite, quite a lot of it, you'll, you'll know already, which is, we were advised this afternoon, it's ten weeks today, that the new unitary authority comes into being. Um, so in terms, can you not hear?
Well.
No, if you, would you mind having a stand up for sitting on that chair? Would that be all right?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you for that, you're welcome.
Um, yeah, so it's, it's ten weeks today that the new unitary authority comes into being. We were reminded this afternoon, which means by definition, it's the last ten weeks of the current sovereign authorities. Um, so there's an awful lot of frantic activity taking place. Um, similarly, at the other end of the bushery scale, there's quite a lot of frantic work taking place at the new unitary level as well. Making sure that everything is going to be absolutely safe and legal from day one. Um, so that's, that's my update on sort of looking back and looking forward. Um, in terms of Penrich, which I know is dear to all of our hearts, you'll be aware that through the Borelands Place Programme and a few other initiatives, there is a lot of, of work taking place or likely to take place in Penrith itself, which is good stuff. They are all improvements. They're going to improve connectivity, they're going to improve sustainability, they're going to improve the, the offer that the town has for not only the, the residents, but also for visitors, et cetera, et cetera. But the reason that I, I, I wanted to specifically address, um, council tonight was, it's a request actually. And it's in and amongst the improvements that we've all waited for an awful long time to see come to fruition, or nearly. Um, there's an awful lot of development going on in town at the moment that you'll be aware of. Hand in hand, that development, because of timing issues, is now taking place at a time when finances are tighter, when developers are finding that their proposed developments are less and less likely to be viable. Um, and my plea to council is, as I'm phasing out, if you will, by, by the beginning of April, so I potentially one more meeting with you, but Pat Bell will take over the, the role that I, I currently have. My plea to council is, if you could be absolutely vigilant in terms of the planning applications which are coming to the new authority, as will be, um, Eden in the short term, and I know that our representatives from, from the Eden planning on here tonight, in terms of what developers are proposing, because from my experience, what is starting to happen that I haven't seen in an awful long time, is on the grounds of viability, developers are starting to walk away from, um, essential requirements associated with the development, which tends to be infrastructure, which has been asked for and which has been considered in planning terms, and in some cases by planning inspectors, as essential for that development to go ahead. So all I would say is, there will be, over the next, the next while, uh, there will be applications coming in to amend potentially conditions to withdraw from things which have been deemed necessary before, and these will be done on the grounds of viability. So as I say, my, my plea to you tonight is, please, as a consultee, as people who are stakeholders, as we all are in the town, please, please be vigilant to make sure that the developments we get come with all of the requirements for them to be viable, and not a package where it has to be picked up by other bodies later in the day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Are you allowed to? Can we ask it? Yes.
Uh, can, can we rely on the planning authority to take whatever action it requires on, say, our recommendations if, if a developer decides not to put in a bus route or a school or something like that? Can we rely on them to stop the development? Have we had it pulled down?
That they will take on board the comments that you make. But I think the secret in actually getting action along those lines is to have coordinated approach to these things. And I, I think, you know, if there is a, a body against what appears to be being proposed, then I think, you know, more weight is given to it rather than sort of a, an odd comment. That, that would be my advice. If you're not happy with it, then ensure that the planning authority knows that you are not making it up.
I don't think we've ever heard from that.
No.
Just to clarify, I think this is the question that councillor Shepherd was asking. To, to be more specific, what is the ultimate sanction?
Uh, the ultimate sanction is, is, um, I suppose you could appeal against a decision. You, you could actually, um, appeal to the planning authority and, and say, you know, I don't believe that you've taken all these factors into account, and then take it down that route. Beyond that, it, it goes for independently beyond that.
With respect to that, an appeal's not really a sanction, is it?
Well, an, an appeal is a second opinion as to whether or not what hasn't been done should actually have been. So the, the appeal would actually, it would put a process in place which meant that if it were deemed that what had been thought previously to be essential still was, that the developer then had to carry on with it, irrespective of what the planning authority may have said. You know, you can, you do have another level of, of input into that process, but I'm, I'm just fearful, I mean, it's probably obvious from the comments that I'm making, but I am quite fearful that in, in the current climate, that people may walk away from their obligations, and we may get left high and dry with a load of new developments which aren't complete as such, and, and maybe disconnected, and maybe unsafe from certain aspects.
Because it's, yeah, um, I can't forget what you're saying and know the issues that we're facing, but, um, uh, planning applications alive at this moment in time, even through Penrich, county council, the funds are going for reconsultation, county council in twenty twenty, one minute application first came up, asked for half a million towards education. It's gone for reconsultation, and now they said they don't want anything.
Yeah.
Um, saying that the birth rate levels are falling, so we can't justify asking for a penny. So surely that same development is now, you know, Penrith's half a million less for education funding.
Yeah, and, and that, that is a very specific instance is education, because very much as, as was, um, included in your response, that the number of young people has actually fallen quite dramatically, and in fact, on a needs basis. Because in order to, um, apply conditions to planning, it has to be, one of the, the conditions to put a condition on a planning is that it has to be necessary, and you can no longer justify requesting a contribution for education when it's deemed that the number of education places currently available are satisfactory for the population as is in the foreseeable future. And they do, they do predict over a number of years. So that, that's why in the case of education, that, that is a one, but in the case of other things, that is not the case.
Okay. Thank you very much. We understand the situation. Councils are very looked to put a stop order on a break, which they have a perfect right to do. Whether six is not done, contractors tell you do this, or we shut you down for ten quarters. We hope. I will, as a contractor, my biggest lie, I've had it threatened to me. And we reacted extremely quickly. Right, sorry. Right. Item five, excluding the public orders of missing meetings act nineteen sixty. Members, please pay attention, asking to determine whether items thirteen and fourteen to be considered in detail without the presence of press and public pursuant to section one, brackets, two of the public orders of missing meetings act nineteen sixty are publicity related to a fact. Any of those matters may be presented to the public interest by reason of a confidential nature of the business or rather special reasons. These matters relate to financial, personal, sensitive information relating to members themselves. Members are asked to note that matter thirteen, have a proposal that thirteen to fourteen, um, determined in private.
Seconded.
Seconded. Go for it, Phil, Dan. Thank you. Right, a force for council chair. Due to customers or other ongoing activities and, and enjoying the weather, I have not represented people to see in any event until our meeting. Any members would like to provide an oral report regarding meetings, they are intended as representatives of the town council?
Yes. I, I had an informal meeting with the Chair of Carlton Heights Resident Group on Sunday, yesterday. Um, I'm very pleased to hear from him that they are planning to meet in person sometime in March, um, as a group. I think they're planning a hybrid meeting, um, so it'll be kind of people dialing in and people actually present as well. Um, there's quite a lot going on on the estate, um, in particular problems around the fact that, um, none of that, none of it has been adopted yet. So things like gritting and, uh, speed limits and, and parking and all those kind of issues are coming up. And there's very little that we can do at the moment, but there seems to be a lot of people that are kind of keen to get involved in some way and do something about it. Um, they've also got a big problem with maintenance charges as well, as more houses are built and there's less, uh, maintenance available, so like less grass cutting and things like that. They were expecting the list to go down, but they've actually gone up um, quite dramatically. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of, um, a lot of activity around that as well. Um, and I know, um, councillor Holden's been involved this week as well with, with some of the, uh, the issues around gritting on Carlton Hill Road, haven't you? Yeah, I don't know if you want to say something about that?
You want a story? No, I had several.
I know it's hard for us, but sorry.
The Monday one, we had that really awful, the snow and the ice and everything else, and I had several emails and phone calls about the fact that the, where the first of the development, Primrose Line meets Carlton Hill Road, and HGP had blocked whole entrance. The HGP was taking equipment or stuff up to the development of the site, and it couldn't move. So that had meant cars had to go past. Um, I got in touch immediately with, um, councillor Bell, and I tried to log it on the Cumbria County Council highways. They failed initially. I'll be there now, I'll be back from somewhere. Councillor Bell spoke particularly first in highways, and he instigated the grit bins, and one resident seemed to think the grit had actually been down there as well. So the grit bins are provided by the county council, but they are funded by the person development. So person development, we sent a bill, uh, to achieve what we should have done to replace this, sorry. Why is that in the air? So anyway, um, yeah, so good news is it's been resolved, and hopefully in the long term, everything continues to resolve that, putting up the grit bins. Um, yeah, there's other things going on about the, um, the bus route, that old bus route to Carlton. Um, that's ongoing, that's ongoing, it's ongoing. And, um, the Carlton Park community, sorry, I'm doing reports for members now, is that all right? Yeah. Right. Um, they're moving on the, um, the installation of the Mubia in March.
London.
Thing, yeah, whatever, I think. Um, the old quotes are very much outdated, they were sort of pre-COVID. And I'm assured by the pleas of the office that they've got a double in price now, so we're going to, uh, let's hear about the committee and look for funding, so, and, and, anybody who's got anything, if you're working on it, please. We'd be very welcome. I think that's it. Bus routes, Carlton Park, I shall, yeah, thank you.
Nice.
The council just unfinished, we don't know.
Just, just to add to what, what Deb said, um, there are some grit bins on the, on the Carlton Meadows estate as well. Um, but they are provided and filled by, uh, personnel at the moment. And, and when people are asking for new ones, we're going to have to get, I guess, we're going to have to get in touch with personnel to see whether they put more on. Um, it's a bit, I think, the last time I looked, there's only two of them for the whole estate, so it's a bit of a struggle.
Problems that state, it's flagged up by one of the residents to say, well, actually, you want entrance and exit to that huge estate blocked by an HGV, it's really a dangerous situation. So linking back to councillor, um, Eric's comments that we look carefully at any planning applications coming in and think, health and safety wise, I mean, I know there is a barrier, I mean, it's part of the, the end of the estate. And emergency vehicles can't get through there, I implore.
Well, yeah, well, we'll be able to. It's not the most, it's a solid, um, fence, but when they put the moving bollard in, the bus, it allows the bus to go, emergency vehicles will be able to activate that bollard.
Are you saying emergency vehicles can't get that?
Well, last time I was up there, I walked with a vent up there, there was a, a, a fence fencing right across the road.
Yeah, it was all wa, it was all waiting on the bus activating. Once the bus route was activated, then they were supposed to put in a proper gate.
Well, even, and even over and above that then, to have one exit to that, entrance exit to that huge estate is dropping all the time, I mean, that was bad development.
I had a, I had a phone call from one of the residents who lives on that corner, saying exactly the same thing, that's the only way in and out.
Yeah.
It's this HGV.
Tom to answer while the HGV blocked everything.
Yeah.
That's a lot, too, huh?
Yeah, in the spirit of bringing matters of interest and attention to the council, um, building on the minutes from last time, um, I think most people know we have a letter, our response about free school meals, um, which are proposals for universal free school meals and other things was rejected. Um, so thank goodness the county council stepped in with two million net which it previously, but the situation is still bad in terms of the number of children in poverty income rate continues to rise. Uh, the next thing was, uh, in terms of Castle Park, um, just an information, uh, councillor Shepherd and myself were meeting with Tim Farman, the leader of the new council, uh, Thursday, I think, Thursday this week, to discuss about devolution, um, of, of, uh, Castle Park, the devolution of responsibility. Um, we've been told that the leader of the council, uh, the Eden District Council says there is no plan for devolution yet within the new council. However, uh, our response, uh, in the meantime this week will be, but there is a plan, uh, there is an existing plan for devolution. We don't have to invent a new plan or wait for a new council to invent new procedures. We can rely on all procedures. So we'll still be continuing to express, uh, that, uh, the Penrith Town Council is very keen to take on responsibility, given the important negotiation of Castle Park. The final thing, this isn't rubbing the nose of point storing, but it must be disappointing to us all. Uh, especially as we, we wrote to the Eden District Council, giving a warning about how the levelling of the bid couldn't possibly succeed because it didn't fit into the council's category, but they steamed ahead with it despite some very, very good proposals being put in which were rejected. However, the reason I say I'm not rubbing the nose in it, I'm, I'm not sure that it was rejected because it was a bad bid, because if you look at it across the country, uh, certain politicians were rewarded for the things that they've done. Not the least if you look up in the North East and Hartlepool, they won. Um, we didn't have the right colour council, and we didn't have the right wing. We didn't have the wing of the, of the Conservative Party where bids were supported, so we're always going to be against it. But my, my view is, is that we should continue to express our disappointment to the government about the lack of levelling of because this area, Cumbria and wider Cumbria, is, has, has got very little, apart from modern in the West. And it's a great disappointment to us because we all know the need in, in this part of Cumbria for the levelling of money. Um, and if you compare us to the South East, but it's, it's atrocious redistribution of money. And I think it's also appalling that we have to compete against other parts of the country, rather than make a needs assessment about where that money should be best located. So whoever should be expressing this to, I think, is responsible to give the town council to continue with trying to get the best for this area by, by raising these issues of disappointment about the levelling of bid.
I need to go track back a lot of hours. I just remembered, I've been reminded, that I actually attended a meeting with Scores Self-Resistance Association.
I'm glad you're here.
Nothing particular. The before mentioned bus route was. Nothing particular. The before mentioned bus route was a lot of the agenda.
I'll put that under reports for members.
Right. Resolutions tracker, members asked to note for a report, all three resolutions have been completed. Item nine, matters from our finance committee. Members asked to approve matters aimed to see what the council's finance committee from their meeting held on Monday the sixteenth of January twenty twenty-three, which had been considered agreed by them from the council finance committee. The committee's chair has requested that these matters are brought to full council for actual approval. Item A, the budget control statement twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, as of thirty-first of December twenty twenty-two, I'd like to move the budget control statement for actual claims that period. Do I have a second? No approval? I do still have three, yes. Right. Now, the proposed budget, am I in? I'm proposing, proposing to accept this and I have an explanation of what it's all about. Condensed for, although relatively condensed. The twenty twenty-three proposed budget has a total expenditure of five hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five pounds, which requires a precept of four hundred sixty-eight, two nine five, and represents a nil increase for the town council's element of the council tax. With the ongoing problems associated with the pandemic and cost of living challenges, we feel that an increase would be inappropriate and a major balance is to be at A. The tip-up house of the pen with the property value band B will see the town council's full council tax element maintain to sixty-four pounds sixty-three, P representing about one pound twenty-four. Accompanying the budget is a robust and sustainable financial plan based on modest cut into interest in council tax, which will continue to grow our services and maintain sufficient reserves to ensure our resilience. The proposed budget twenty-three, twenty-four provides a framework for the council to continue to progress its maintenance inception and labels it the plan for a sustainable financial future. The main adjustments to the council budget are the reallocation of some existing resources to increase the town project budget, to enable the council to respond to schemes and work that were previously undertaken to better improve the bid. The bid vote rejection requires the council to support to some extent some of the bids, schemes and work that were felt community valued, and as such, the budget is thought to provide the resources to allow town greening, because the site renovation and town dressing to continue, but maybe not to the extent under formal access currently. The other adjustment to the development, a new elections reserve, as is expected, that all future election costs other than parish elections in May twenty-three will be recharged to the council by the electoral authority. And as such, it is proven the plan for these future costs, the budget also provides the sources for. New signature events, grant scheme to support community cohesion, celebrate local culture and provide better for the community. The forthcoming reorganisation of local government is a major event on the council's horizon, and the budget includes the five thousand pounds to allow the council to respond to the planning of any new service delivery requirements. Although we now understand the shape of the new future authority, we still aren't known extent of assets and services which may be transferred to our council. Council has a good track record in this respect, as long-term running costs of assets already taken over by the council are being delivered to lower cost of expenses charged. The community is returning to normal following the COVID pandemic, but now facing new challenges from decreasing cost of living. This has been pretty typically, has been a difficult year for the council and its community. Internally, the councils had to manage to reduce number of staff due to sickness or vacancy, yet despite these irritations, we're able to keep our services running for the benefit of the town counties. In the current, second half of the current year, the council was able to successfully recruit a community service officer and welcome the replacement, RFO, into post. And as such, we expect capacity to allow the council's priorities to progress. In closing, I'd like to thank councillor Nine, the members of the land committee, council committees and their officers, and the sterling contributions of developing this budget to label the council to continue providing quality services to the town and deliver business plan, which is from the South and Northern. I therefore propose all four requisite budget reports to amend them to you.
You see, the second, please, Mr.
The second, right. Questions, questions to make?
Councillor Lewis, sorry. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I was spoken with officers before this was done with the Gaz participatory budget being cut, or reallocated. I mean, I do feel quite sad the fact that we missed an opportunity. I've got ten thousand in the arts and culture funding. The funding via participatory budget, being put in the arts and culture, too people to go on projects in the community. I'm, you know, I'm looking through the budget, looking through what finance discussed last week in the agenda, et cetera. And I know suddenly we've got a, I think it's about six thousand, it looks out, a year increase because we've taken on a social media, company to manage the social media, which I don't think has been tendered for, we've given it to about five thousand.
No, it's not, this is, that's a day.
And I, you know, question where all the students agreed, discussed taking on, we haven't yet agreed or debated the social media policy, and we're taking on a management committee for six thousand per year. But yet we're cutting lines from the budget in other areas. So, I do question perhaps where things are being cut and axing the budget and then other spending is being fed into the budget in place of.
Can I ask a little question for social media? Is that okay? Is that okay? That was agreed by the finance committee before Christmas and that was really response to the Facebook account, the Hackish Mobile. It's a six-month short-term contract that we reviewed in March. And the main purpose of it was to unravel the dashboard and reset and relaunch it. And now they are helping us with promoting the Facebook page and doing posts. It's going to be reviewed by finance committee in March. So, the totality of the budget leaves for six-month period only. Thereafter, if we were going to continue with that, any service like that, we'd have to be, we'd have to get quotes that anything up to five thousand.
But later on this evening, we're going to be asked to agree that because within the policy that we'll be debating on social media, it lists and states that there will be an external communications code, so.
Because that's in place as of now. If you resolve the policy today, then that's, because they're in place now. If that position changes at March, the policy changes.
Mr. Chair, would you, we'd like to respond to Mr. Davis on the rationale behind participatory budget. So, yeah, as you know, councillor Davis spoke to you pre-Christmas when we were bringing the project together. So, for other members, information, we felt the bid revolve being a no, that there would be expectation from the community that some schemes of work there previously progressed would still on to be seen by the community. So, as opposed to looking to put our precept down, we looked at, we could make adjustments and buy into when our existing budget. So, in effect, we've enhanced the town project budget to allow us to fund Christmas lights in this year, greening and town dressing. The rationale specifically around participatory budgeting, I wouldn't class it a cut, I would class it a buy-in on the basis that there was no policy approved. The ten thousand pound budget that we put into this year's budget gone unspent, with no comments against it. But what we have put in the report that showed members wanting to bring forward participatory budget, model our policy, I would mainly this year and this year, the members could consider it. And at that point, we would address any budget implications. So, that's our rationale behind the buy-in from participatory budgeting to town, town projects.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's funny to add in, to a degree, I think the town council is a massive opportunity. I probably get the loss from the bid, but things like the Christmas lights, the greening are ideal opportunities to actually take to the community and say, look, we need, do you want the Christmas lights? Do you want the greening? And, you know, put the process forward, let the community go to make how that money is allocated. And that is, in essence, what participatory budget is about. And that is then, yeah, we're still covering both bases, really.
Yeah, just on that part, I don't think anybody would disagree, certainly, I don't think officers would disagree, it's just that we don't have an appropriate policy in present, so. I mean, I think it's a bit disingenuous for you to make that one, since I've seen at least two or three emails inviting you. You came for one with a good idea of participatory budget, which we all supported. You were then asked to say, how would you see it working? Could you provide more information? And I've seen at least one email where you've declined to provide that information, or delayed providing.
I declined, I have to withdraw that, because I've declined nothing. At any stage, I have been asked by officers to look at, we've had a Christmas period, I also have bronchitis, as the clerk will aware, that'll be quite bad with an on-ounce bout, it's a medication. I declined nothing.
Can I finish my point?
No, because I wanted to withdraw that statement because I've declined nothing in any of those.
You declined to provide the information in December. Perhaps you were invited then or said you may be with it later, but it hasn't been provided here. So, what I'm saying is I would encourage you to provide that information so the participatory budget could be proceeded with. And I think as Ian has outlined, it isn't a cut, it's been re-organized until you can establish some participatory budget. It's still open there to be developed, but there's no blockage to it. But because it was unspent and we didn't get the substance of the whole policy last year, it had to be dealt with financially. And so, that's how it was dealt with. So, it isn't, it isn't being ruled out completely by any means. And I'd encourage you to write the information that you said you would, so that we can get on and get on with it.
Well, now where we are, the money, as we say, the money is available, this is a budget. We have meetings on regular basis at which budget money is can be moved around to suit if there's a change in process, particularly if the bid is revoked, goes the other way, there will be an opportunity for looking at monies that we've pulled away from things to. So, I believe that, as I said, nothing is, nothing is ruled out. You know, a budget is a budget. The only thing that's fixed is the number of the bottom bid, as it were. If we move money around within a budget, provided there's good reason. And that's what the committee, first of all, I'm making them for council agree. So, any other comments on the budget?
Just feedback on the social media aspect. I'm, as people probably know, a fairly heavy user of social media. And I've very much enjoyed seeing the kind of regular flow of information from the town council over the last few weeks, since we've started using this government. It's nice to see that the council is engaged and visible on social media. And with regards to the budget as well and engagement from the public, this council has, in the time I've been here, certainly responded on a number of occasions to requests from the public and requests from other organisations within Enrith. You know, budget aside, if somebody needs money, we found a way to get it to them. And I think, by all means, come forward with your policy, your idea. I think it sounds like a great idea. But we have other ways of doing it as well. So, you know, I'm quite pleased with the budget the way it is. And I'm quite pleased that we've responded to a gap where the bid is disappearing and we're going to try and fill that gap as best we can.
Is it the bid needs disappearing? Well, at the moment, it's disappearing, you know, maybe come back. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, can I just, can we just go back a step and just discuss the proposed budget?
Yes.
Would you do number one first, the forecast act and expenditure? Can I just put just approve that for the ninety-two?
Yes.
And then approve the signature events, right? And then approve the budget with the precept application.
Okay, fine, right. Thank you. Forecast, the first item I'm proposing, the forecast expenditure for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three is four one seven oh nine two, which is the number for the budget control then. That's current year.
Current year, yes, that's right.
Yes. Do I have a second then?
Sir, thank you.
This is the current year.
Yeah, thank you.
There I am, proposing a maximum grant of the signatures event grant, roughly five thousand per event, the signatures event grant funds scheme, the updated recording of annual budget of twenty thousand pounds, established for twenty twenty-four, as included in the current budget. Second then?
Yeah.
Sheriff Adams? Right. Now, I'm prepared, proposing.
The budget.
The budget.
And then precept application.
Right. So, can I move to budget?
That's the, you mean that, I think.
Yeah, from where I hear. A formal request made to Eden District Council to pay a sum of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five pounds, head of town council, as its precept for twenty-three, twenty-four, representing a little increase in the head of town council's element of the council tax.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
No, you have lots.
Yeah. One is, why is the members' training budget so unspent? Is it because members haven't been doing training? Or is it because it's cheaper because we're doing the ones doing the rest of the time?
So, you're going back to the outturn expenditure which we've approved? Right, so I'm asking you a question in the wrong place. All right then, forget that.
No, no.
No, no, but I, if you, there's still a valid question. I'm just trying to see where it fits in. So, yeah. Can't you define it then? I think it's a combination of the fact that soon is cheaper. So, yeah, LCC events are allowed forty pounds, whereas previously it'd be near three hundred pounds with the down residential. For councillors, there has been take on training this year, but my minister has been writing certificates in her handbook. Would you say that's fair, Ian?
I'd say that's fair. I think, I think by doing the training virtually, it's saving a lot of money.
You're saving on travelling expenses, aren't you, things like that? Thank you.
You had another question?
This actually, yes.
You said you had two. I remember it's two parts of the same question.
Well, no, no, I've got two question marks against allotments, but I don't know why.
Well, of course.
You're welcome. Please go ahead, scream out Ian about allotments after the meeting, or myself.
And this is just curiosity, what did you spend a hundred and two pounds on civic regalia?
Yes.
Yes.
I think it was a new lease press report.
Ah, it's a seal. Yes, I remember you saying, be good to seal. I remember that. Thank you. Thank you, Alison.
Wilson?
Can I ask a question I know the answer to?
You asked a question that I'm not sure for a second.
We've said we're not putting up, there's no percentage increase in the amount that we're asking for the precept, that the amount of money that we're asking for is more than it was last year.
Yes, but for the current base tax rate, for the whole council, no, the answer is greater because of more houses at stake presumably.
That's correct.
Therefore, we're asking for the same amount per house, but there are more houses in certain, and we end up with fifty grand that we then bought, then no more.
Did we get the right answer?
You did get the right answer.
Just let me say, we're asking for a certain amount. Are we sure that it's the exact amount?
This is what they told us it is.
Yeah, okay, they'll figure out things.
Yeah, they will. That's unchanged lately, it doesn't change in a minute.
Next slide, actually.
It's not the actual position.
Councillor Holden, please.
That's all, yes, sorry.
I've just been a bit thick, really. Look.
No, I don't.
On page twenty-seven, RBF, it says resulting council tax, there's a little increase in the council tax twenty-three, twenty-four. Can we just say it's pen with pen council?
Yes, and when I, as I speak.
Rather than just council tax.
No, because we don't, we don't call it council tax, we can't call it council tax. Only the council tax, authoritatively called it council tax, is precept. It's our share.
It's a little increase, it's our share.
But it's just to make it obvious it's to do with. The results of council tax based on the budget.
Cumbria County Council or even District Council, anybody else's.
We have had, we've had a big debate about how to make it clear for the public.
Yes. And I've been to the town council meetings, that's why.
It's called the council, yeah.
It's our work. It's our bit.
It's our share of the council tax. That's the only way we can do it.
Yes, so it's a precept that you're getting.
Yes. When I presented this, I said the pen of town council element of.
Right.
Which is, was trying to make it clearer.
Yeah.
Because I had the same problem, we, this is our budget. It only affects, all it says, it doesn't affect our bit, it just, I agree with you.
I was first reading, I thought, oh, this council talking about it.
Yes, I know.
And also, you're not making a problem with that.
No, and a little query on page thirty-seven. I just got a question mark by press support. And what is press support?
Articles that we put in for either local.
Oh, either local.
Yeah, or if we were going to buy in some marketing, or some promotional work, or anything like that.
And it's just that?
Yeah, that, no, no, it's not just, it could be anybody. But it's not an officer or anybody like that, it is just about major representation.
And he's like, we're supposed to be.
We might do, yeah, 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 it's very purposeful, really.
Hello, I've had my best, it shows you read the document. It's encouraging. That's it, sorry.
Let me check, in the opening statement about budget, you made reference to council tax, ban B.
Yes.
At sixty, I can't remember the exact amount.
Yes.
The normal protocol of any council does ignore reference to ban D. Yeah, what?
Page thirty-four.
Yeah.
Council ban, ban D, eighty-three, eighty-three pounds nine.
It just makes it easier for comparison.
Sorry, sorry, I was working on my script, does it for that?
So you stay there, but it's important, it's important.
Yes. And that's also, in terms of where council office question, and where the council tax comes from. Right. We have a, we have a second one, we have Sheriff Hamst, sceptred. Thank you. My graph policy. Members were asked to ratify following graph policy.
We did that, and that helped a lot.
Yes. Are we taking all these as a, a load of time?
No, you can get them in the winter, yes.
Right, the reserves policy, can we have a second one? Any questions about the reserve policy? All in favour? Thank you. Investment strategy, a second one. Right, council day, set up a set of these on this.
Right.
Right. Vote? Thank you. So now, the social media policy. Do I have a second one?
Captain Wilson?
Right. Do we have questions discussed?
What, you look to me then, or something?
I'm sorry, I'm looking around.
Yeah, I'm going to be quite honest, Chair. Bit of policy, and what's happened to two succession meetings beforehand really worries me about the direction the Penrith Town Council are taking. We've got a policy here that's actually got wording in it, and section for the media and citizens. Now, who are we as a council to be saying, for our usage, our own Facebook page, and the wording on here? It's time to mention some of the things that are happening in Russia at the moment in time. I don't know who wrote this policy, but I am quite concerned about some of the wording used in it. I mean, I know there's members around this table that from other organisations last year resigned because somebody was booted out their organisation for having liked and shared something on Facebook. Yet Penrith Town Councils got that same wording in this policy here, the finance committee is recommending to this council to approve. Now, I'll be quite honest, this week I announced I won't be standing in May, and this is one of the reasons for it, because I'm really worried about the direction this council is taking on the infringement of people's human rights. I mean, what's next, planning is going to be committing, approving a policy for a re-education camp at the back of the beacon, because that's the direction this policy is taking the council. So I'm actually going to make a motion that this goes in the bin. And Penrith Town Council, under the new council, after the May local elections, gets to consider a policy, which I believe is what members really thought we were going to do on the social media policy, when we discussed it last time. And I'm not aware, apart from being through finance committee, any members that have been involved in the creation of this policy. So I'm proposing an amendment that this policy's bin, and the new council, after the May local elections, gets to consider a social media policy for Penrith Town Council.
So then, can I ask, can you point out what you're talking about?
Yeah. Sorry to come all the way upside down. There is a section that's social media protocol for councillors.
What page?
I don't know, because I've got no page numbers on this. I can show you, it's in section one. Um, there we go.
Page sixty-two, members. After the benefit of the council, myself, and the decision to wrote these policies based on existing policies that are national, that are used by various levels of local governance. And most councillors, as far as I'm aware, have a policy on how to deal with this vexatious and persistent complainants on social media streams. And that is the policy regarding major and citizens.
If I can read out, as I said, the wording, if that's okay, Chair. Section three, responsibilities of council, item four in section three. Simply liking, sharing, retweeting quotes will be seen as endorsement of them, and legally, this can be a separate instance of publication by the councillor, to which all legal and clerk con- considerations could apply. Now, again, in this policy, there's no differentiation between personal social media and those that councillors have in their official capacity. In terms of other things that are mentioned there, I mean, there's an entire policy there, obviously, there's the social media for employees. And then, I think it's the third section that is titled acceptable use of social media by media and the community. And within there, it mentions about an external communications team that will monitor social media posts, will make every effort to identify the person responsible, right to them, there will be panels convened with clerk, and I think it was a solicitor, to make decisions on whether people are blocked. There will be no right of appeal for a twelve-month period for anybody, but this is members of the public. I'm sorry, the wording in this policy, it really, really, it's got my heckles upon this one, because of the fact that we're into such.
Does it advise members that that aligns with our vexatious complainants policy? Just so to give us a context, so we already have a policy in place, which is similar with regard to dealing with complaint.
I think we've, as I was saying, we've got proposal amendment.
Which we've passed seconded.
We're seconding, and we're discussing without getting it seconded.
Indeed, Mr Chair.
Do we have a second one?
Motion, still, I have a question, what's the event?
Look, we've scrapped this policy. I think that was one.
You said it goes in the bin, and the new council gets to consider, as a council, a policy after the May local elections, there may well be members around this table, it may be new members. We're not tying the hands of those future council with a policy that will put in place like this.
Can I just make a point of order? It was my understanding, and I may be wrong, that if somebody wants to scrap a motion, that's effectively the negative of the motion, and that's what's affected by the vote. So, that's not a legal amendment.
So no motion? This motion.
Right. If you don't want it, you don't vote for it, basically. And then, you know, you don't have to have a separate motion.
Can I just confirm, please? So the motion on the table, it's the only motion on the table. So nobody moved and seconded, this is a motion I've heard. So the motion on the table is councillor Davies', which needs a second one.
No, I moved it.
And then you said it was seconded.
No, I said, I moved it.
So the motion on the table is councillor Davies'.
What, the amendment?
Amendment is councillor Davies', so it does require seconding, is that correct?
Yeah.
So we need a second one for councillor Davies' proposal to amend the motion. Do you have to ask that?
I have, I have them.
Yeah. Is there anyone seconding that motion, amendment? So it's fallen. So there needs to be a motion on the table, right?
Yes, the motion on the table is that I propose that we accept or ratify the social media policies. Do I have a second one?
A second one.
Sorry, I didn't understand, I'll be quick.
Okay, don't worry. Right, that's open for discussion now. Thanks for holding.
Yeah, I've been highlighting a few things. Page sixty-three, data protection. As the first time that I came across the word publish, and it didn't occur elsewhere in the article, but it wasn't clear there to me what publishing meant. Later on, it does come on page sixty-five, the exact paragraph that councillor Davies said. Number four, this could be a substance of publication. I just wondered if it could be some reference to what published actually means.
Yeah.
This is document, I know I'm nitpicking.
No, no, it's fine.
You know, it's easy when something's in front of you.
Would you want that as a glossary?
It might be quite useful, that, actually, yeah.
Well, that could be better.
Publishing is many guys, it's because I just thought, well, I don't publish anything, I'm not a reporter on a newspaper. Got to take it in its own.
Your post, your post is your publication.
Yeah, if I just like something, I'm publishing, I'm publishing it.
Okay, understood, so a glossary of towns with the experience.
Yes, yeah, and then a big broadcast, page sixty-seven, section seven. Number one, published again, it's made a broadcast there. So we've come to many guys, this term. Because I could be a broadcast.
Thanks, yeah.
Oh, yes. Page sixty-six, section four, number four, council principles. Make an effort to share what you know. Fine. Offer insights for a program, hold people in touch with someone who can help you if you cannot. And I know from our training with the district council, and, you know, data protection, you can't just forward some of these details, and I'm not quite sure where that appears in this document.
Fair enough, it's about third-party consent, okay.
Yeah, just make it absolutely clear that putting people in touch is difficult. You've got to get that person's permission first before you do anything.
Is it like how you do it, you don't forward email addresses, but you can say?
No.
You think you can do it, the other way, you can say, I can get council bail to contact you if you want.
If you give, if you give me permission to pass your information and contact.
I'll have another bit, I thought it was in there, I'll have another trial.
Yeah, it might be, but I haven't seen it presented just like that. I just think it needs to say.
Yes, it's definitely in our GDPR policy, and it's in the training that members receive, and then start.
And it is, it's tricky, because sometimes you can forward an email that's got bits under it, and again, that is mentioned in here. You don't forward anything.
You'll be surprised how often that happens.
Yeah, and it's really.
Cope for shepherd.
This one, we're on the same one then, number four on page sixty-six. What would be considered a timely manner in which you respond to questions in the conference?
I suppose it's down to your conception, timely manner could be anything from within twenty-four hours to within a week. But I would imagine it, any longer than that, it's not quite as timely, is it?
As you know, that chap, Tom Johnson. Apologise me if I'm not responding to him after about two days. But when I looked on the policy relating to stuff like that, I think we actually say you can expect a response within, and it's a number of weeks, isn't it?
Yeah, but this is about guidance. Okay, this is guidance and advice. And at the end of the day, it's what you consider to be timely.
I mean, I understand concerns about rules that try and moderate behaviour. I mean, there's always going to be, it's always going to be problematic. But it's about the interpretation of that, and I think, you know, we're all reasonable people. We would all interpret this reasonably, to compare us to Russian indoctrination camps, I think is bizarre. Especially since this is based on national guidance and common practice. And in previous life, I've seen documents exactly like this that were agreed to monitor people, but to protect them, protect them from abuse, to protect them from violence. I mean, it's been debated this in government in the last week, that the bill going through wasn't strong enough, because it wouldn't call people personally responsible for it, in the same way as health and safety, might. If you're on health and safety at work, you can be held personally responsible. Let's say for a death as a result of health and safety, it's not the organisation necessarily that's held responsible. The individual could be held responsible. And it is problematic, but it's about the interpretation, about the reasonableness and implementation of any policy. In terms of human rights, I would encourage councillor Davies to take the legal advice and action that he's promised to take to the full, to test this for us, to see if you, because I don't believe there's any issue of human rights in here whatsoever. And anything the council's done previously. So I would encourage you with that, because it would be very useful to us, if you're learning for everybody. If you're learning either for councillor Davies, or if you're learning for the people who produced this report. I mean, when you use words like defamation, I don't think, for people who use social media, I think there is, a day goes by when I don't see somebody defending on social media. Most people don't take action, because everybody knows it's a silly remark, and particularly in the political context, people are defended all of the time. But I think there's a line that's crossed when people are actually encouraging people to do or adopt views that are unpalatable. And I mean, the other case that's been in the news this week has been about suicide, about websites that encourage suicide, and who's responsible for that. So I acknowledge that it is extremely difficult, but I think this is a thorough goal, and getting it right. And if we haven't got it right, we can alter it in the future. If there are exceptions that prove to be the rule, then it can be altered.
Councillor Donald, and Councillor Snow, and Councillor Davies.
I don't think there's much to say about Canada, it's not everything said. But I don't use social media that much myself, and I'm very careful. And the care that I use with that is as much about the necessity for myself would be extended to how I would use it involving other people. And so I'm very careful when I look through this about kind of what might scare me, or what might frighten me for the reasons I already have. And although I can see the concerns, to make sure that we don't have any of the descriptions that councillor Davies has brought to council, I personally didn't see any worry about that. I think that, like, for any, we have something, I'm putting my glasses on, you should, responsibility of councils. As has always been said, it's guidance, it's advice, it's a way of trying to, to, to to kind of steer us potentially. And it's not about duties, it's responsibilities, we have to take that responsibility ourselves. So the idea that we have to follow a particular line of thinking, absolutely, or face consequences. I don't think it's anything to do with that.
Councillor Snow?
Yeah. My point is, I get confused between social media use as a private individual, which I make very careful decisions about my Facebook page. It's not open, it's not a public document. So I can do that as a private individual and put what I like, which are my beliefs, on. As a councillor, it would be if I went on a Facebook page and put myself as councillor Hilary Snow, which I would never do unless it was something like supporting what a wonderful event it was in the town centre on such a day. So I think, I don't know if it can be any clearer, I think it is pretty clear about that. But I think, you know, liking and sharing, retweeting posts, I do as an individual, never I have done as a councillor.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, this comes back, councillor Snow has hit me there, bang on the head there. But what I've been fighting for the last six, seven, two years is that difference between, I mean, I personally have got two Facebook accounts. I've got my personal one, and I have one as councillor Davies. But yet, posts that I do on my personal. But yet posts that I do on my personal Facebook page end up screenshots getting taken off, end up code of conduct against me for saying things. This week again, I've had another code of conduct from screenshots about a post that I did that a member of the public, nothing to do with me, posted on, and I've got a code of conduct from the chief executive reading council lodged against me now. Now, the post that I'd done was about me taking up an MBA course at York, and a member of the public had put a comment to that. And suddenly I've got a code of conduct against me accusing me of things on my personal Facebook page. So councillor Snell's comment is bang on there about that, I mean, it doesn't account for him yet, about that difference between a councillor's role and acting as a councillor, and councillor's social media accounts, and personal individuals, and there's no accounting idea.
So Lawson? I, I was just going to point out, um, that when we first looked at this, um, it had a, I think, a four or five year review cycle, or maybe we'll add other documents. And I asked, asked if we could change that to annual because this is a very fast moving topic. Um, there are a lot of, as we've seen this evening, there are a lot of different views on, on what is and isn't acceptable. Um. I, I, it actually makes me feel quite sad that we even have to talk about it, to be honest, we're all grownups and we all know what, what might be perceived as wrong and what might not. Um, there, there may be some grey areas in there, but in general, we can all just get along without upsetting other people. And, and as councillors, we have got a responsibility to hold ourselves maybe just a little bit higher than, than the normal public, I think. Um. I'm, I'm pleased with this, I think it's a good step forward. I, I think we should make, make clear notes that it's a living document, and that it's going to get changed regularly and, and probably quite ferociously in places. But I'm happy that we're not turning into a dictatorship, we're not becoming like Russia, um, and, and I'm, if, if I dare say it, I'm quite sick of talking about the stuff now. I want to get on with being a council and doing good. Yeah, I've, I've got a list on my desk at home at the moment, I've, I've challenged myself to make a, a short statement about my behaviour for the year. And on there, I've got be kind, look after your family, and try to learn something new every day, nice and straightforward, but that be kind. You, you can't upset other people if you're being kind, you can't upset people if you're doing good, it doesn't happen.
Right. That leads to a position, and, and I think everyone's had their say here, I'd like to take a vote bottom.
Point of order, check, we have a name for it, please.
Of course. Take a vote, right. You read out my names?
You did it. Right, when your names read out and you can state whether you're voting for it, which is to adopt the policy in front of you, or against, or abstain. Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Lawson?
For.
Councillor Margaret Clark?
Abstained.
Councillor Kenyon?
For.
Councillor Mike Shepherd?
For.
Councillor Davies?
Against.
Councillor Bergen?
Absent.
Councillor Riddell?
For.
Councillor Holden?
For.
Councillor Donald?
For.
Councillor Snell?
For.
Councillor Knight?
For.
Councillor Shepherd?
Councillor Shepherd?
For.
Ten for, one against, two abstentions.
Right, right. We're asked to ratify the training policy, and I propose that we accept the training policy as presented. Do I have a second? I pulled the string, I had to. Right. Does anyone have anything comments on the training policy? Do you have a motion to second it, and for live? Okay, vote. I don't think you want to comment.
No, for.
Okay, fine, sorry, sorry. Thank you very much, right, right. On what might be less controversial, I think, members are asked to approve a draft letter of support, which I'd like to propose to send to the Penrith Football Club, supporting their approach to getting a free G pitch and everything else to do with the group, and I think the letter is in them, in here.
I'll second that.
Second, I'll also, anyone want to say anything? Right. We go to the vote, sorry, let's say that, you're voting, okay, please, okay, voiceover?
All right.
Right. Draft neighbourhood plan update, a raw, and, and more raw report, thoughts or not, great.
Right, the draft neighbourhood development plan commenced in two thousand and seventeen, was submitted to Eden District Council in December twenty nineteen, to allow them to undertake the regulation sixteen consultation, which is statutory consultation. Due to Covid, the consultation didn't start until the latter half of twenty twenty, with the public examination in March of twenty twenty one. At the public examination, the independent examiner raised some issues regarding Beacon Hill, and requested that the town council and the landowners try to develop policies specifically for that area. This wasn't possible, so the examiner decided to prepare one himself, which couldn't be supported and which he actually withdrew. The examiner released his final report on the draft neighbourhood development plan on twenty ninth of March twenty twenty two, and recommended some changes based on the revised planning policy framework. So there were some slight wording changes to many of the policies that he suggested, um, deleting policy one altogether, which was about sustainable development because the new MPPF, which came out in twenty twenty two, had overtaken things and caught up with what we wanted to do, you don't repeat it. The examiner felt that policy for Beacon Hill was unachievable, and stated quite clearly in his report that as Beacon Hill did not meet the national criteria for local green space, that green space designation, as it, as it was an extensive area of land of one hundred and forty four acres, it should be deleted from the neighbourhood plan. He also recommended deletion of policy eight, which was identifying and protecting local green space, and policy nine, protecting and enhancing sport, leisure and recreation facilities in their entirety. Although the green spaces were identified by Penrith residents with reasons why they were important and special, and felt that they should be, should be protected, the examiner, examiner queried whether they were demonstrably special to residents, and in fact, in his report, he actually talks about whether or not the green spaces in Veride Park and the farm were as special as the cricket club, and they're obviously very different. Penderham Town Council challenged the examiner's assumptions, and a meeting was held with officers of Eden District Council, who suggested that it would be helpful to the district council for the town council to review and confirm its submission, and that it would be helpful if there was some authority, such as council's opinion, which the district council would be able to rely on if it wished to contradict, contradict or not approve the examiner's recommendations. Penderham Town Council reviewed its submission, which was sent to Eden District Council and reported to Penderham Town Council in December twenty twenty two. It was not necessary for the town council to obtain council's opinion for its own purposes. The district council would always have to obtain its own opinion if it was unclear on matters of law, of law relating to its statutory responsibilities, or needed advice from council. The district council could not have been able to rely upon an opinion which had been obtained by a third, third party, and more particularly the town council, which has a distinct interest in the outcome of the district council, council's deliberations. The interests and roles of the district council and town council relating to the examiner's report and recommendations are not the same. A further meeting has been held with Eden District Council officers to make comments on the examiner's approach. They came to that meeting, and there was an understanding of our views on policy nine, which, um, are the enhancing lots, sport, leisure and electric facilities, which were felt to be quite distinct, and no further information is thought to be necessary at this stage. Eden District Council have also indicated that they are willing to consider additional evidence on policy eight, identifying and protecting local green space sites, um, with information from the public indicating why those areas are demonstrably special, some additional confirmation is still awaited from them, but we are moving forward.
Apologies for not providing a report with the agenda, but this literally was written this morning, as we've had meetings this morning about this, so it's as fresh, as fresh as it can be. If members would like copies of that, that can be appended to the minutes, that been helpful? Yes, please.
Yes.
Then I would ask, can we, just to know?
To know.
That's all right. But, well, yes, I think it's a good idea that, that that report is attached, and it's, all right. And takes me to the link for the next meeting. Ask you to note, the next meeting for council is scheduled for the twenty seventh of March at six P M in unit two, Churchill, Flaggate. If no one knows where unit two is, you're sitting in it.
That would be the last meeting.
Oh, that would be the last meeting of this council. Right.
That time bomb.